I'd like to call to order this meeting of Independent School District 624, regular school board meeting. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Oh, that's me. Let's see. Arcand?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thank you. I would ask everyone to rise and remove your hats for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
A moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand. Any discussion of the agenda? All in favor of approval of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is the monthly normal items that come before us, such as minutes and invoices and correspondence. But we're really grateful for the donations that are gifted to this community and the schools by various people in our community. And this month, folks have been generous, just like they always have. So thank you for those donations. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
All right, and we have a consent agenda. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There were seven requests submitted to speak. Six of those requests were on the same topic of fifth grade orchestra. The procedure that we follow for public forum reads, "Public forum will be open for up to 30 minutes, three minutes per speaker, 10 minutes per topic, no more than three speakers per topic. Speakers are encouraged to avoid repeating comments that other speakers have made. This limit is necessary in order to ensure that the school board is able to conduct its business during the meeting in an orderly, efficient, and timely fashion. Therefore, those seven names have been added to a lot, and three names will be randomly drawn to speak by Dr. Arcand. Any person who does not get a chance to speak is encouraged to submit written comments to the school board at schoolboard@isd624.org." And here's how the timing will work. Within one minute remaining, an orange card will be held up. And then with 30 seconds remaining, the yellow card will be held up. At the end, the red card will be held up and the gavel will be tapped. Speakers will be called to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals who have been recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personnel and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. And if anyone is interested in reading more of the public forum regulations and rules, it is Board Policy 206, Addendum A. And it just lays out some of the things like data privacy laws and making sure that those who speak are the ones that are acknowledged by the chair. And make sure that you do address the school board rather than the audience, as this is a board meeting in public rather than a public meeting. So please make sure that you're directing your comments to the board. And please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, vocalizing approval or disapproval to make sure that we can maintain our schedule. So we'll move into now our informational item, C1, Student Recognition. Dr. Kasmatzek.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Our student recognition video tonight honors students who represented the district in state and national level competitions in boys' basketball, adaptive floor hockey, and speech. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears and roll the video.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations to all of our students. We will move into operational, informational item, C2, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kasmatzek.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Tickets are now available for the district's middle school players' Annie Junior production. Performances will take place at 7:00 PM on April 20th and 21st, and at 2:00 PM on April 22nd at the district center auditorium. Purchase tickets online at the shortened link on the screen, or find the link on the middle school musical news item on the district's website. A free fraud prevention presentation related to seniors will take place at the White Bear Senior Center this Thursday, April 13th. The free event is hosted in partnership with the White Bear Lake Police Department. We hope our senior members in the community are able to join us for this important event. Registration is now open for a variety of summer youth enrichment programs. Students throughout the district are invited to join in with programs hosted at two easy-to-access locations. Young learners aren't the only ones who have a variety of options to choose from this summer. The district's community services catalog provides a variety of adult enrichment opportunities too, including arts and hobbies, dance, finance, and health and fitness, to name a few categories. Adult basic education classes are also available in the areas of GED prep and testing, healthcare careers, IT careers, professional careers, and citizenship. While we're on the topic of registration, I'll share that we're eager to welcome our class of 2035, our incoming kindergartners. Always makes me feel really old.
Jeez.
As students are officially enrolled in the district, they receive a welcome packet from their school, complete with an "I'm a Bear" t-shirt. Those who haven't done so already can find enrollment paperwork and additional information at www.isd624.org/kindergarten. The final copy with Dr. K of the school year is coming up on May 2nd. Will be at the downtown White Bear Lake Caribou Coffee from 4:00 to 5:00 PM that day. As always, there's no set agenda, so please feel free to find us in the meeting room to join the conversation. And thank you to those families and community members who joined us for a chat this year. And we are pleased to announce that Russell Reitz, who is here this evening in the audience, has been chosen as the principal for the Unified White Bear Lake Area High School. Reitz comes to the district from Eden Prairie High School, where he currently serves as an associate principal. He will start his time with White Bear Lake Area Schools in July and will lead the effort as our two campuses come together into one unified White Bear Lake Area High School in the fall of 2024. So welcome, Mr. Reitz.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Kasmatzek? All right. With that, we will move on to our first discussion item, discussion item D1, the Central Middle School design update.
All right, I will kick this one off and welcome Sal. So the 2019 building, our future referendum called for renovation and construction of buildings across the district and the repurposing of several buildings. It also identified the sequencing of projects. So the Central Middle School project is now the next in line to begin. The Central Middle School staff has been deeply involved in the design process and began working with the team from WOLD back in June of 2022, and their input informed the design that you'll see tonight. So tonight, we welcome Sal Bagley from WOLD Architects and Central Middle School Principal Katherine Peterson to provide an overview of the design of the project, which includes renovations, a gym addition, and kitchen expansion. So welcome. I'll turn it over to you, Sal.
Ms. Bagley and Ms. Peterson.
Thanks for having us. We're excited to present to you. And so you'll see later in your agenda, there's a recommendation to you all to award bids. So we have just passed the bid opening phase of the project and design is complete, but construction obviously has not yet started. So before I get into Central Middle School, just to give everyone a little bit of context, obviously, we are still working through some of the referendum projects, which included district-wide additions and renovations to accommodate enrollment growth. That actually comes really in the form of Central Middle School taking over district center here is how we're getting them capacity. So that's renovations for the most part, safety and security improvements, deferred maintenance projects, and classroom and building updates to create flexible learning spaces. And all of that is certainly applicable to Central, and I'll show you how that gets played out. Thought it might be interesting for people to understand kind of where we are in the trajectory of the referendum, was successful in November of 2019. And it's fun to see that the project's completed list now takes a little bit more than one column. So we have now moved Otter Lake Elementary School over into the project's completed category. You have a couple of projects yet under construction. The Unified High School, as Dr. Kasmatzek just indicated, will go through fall of 2024. Onique Elementary School is under construction right now. And then we have some maintenance-oriented work happening at the ALC this summer. So those are all three in the construction phase. And then Central will shortly move from the design to the construction after your action later this evening. And then the last really large project under design is the Sunrise Park. So district center, the Transition Education Center, and then the functions that are currently at Normandy Park, so early childhood and the senior center, will all move to that campus, which is really kind of our last major project to get through. When it comes to the design process, I'm going to ask Katherine to speak a little bit about this. We did put together a core planning group for the project, and do you mind speaking to who was on that for our group?
For Central, we had a pretty significant, we had a significant planning group. We had a lot of teachers that were interested. Actually, I think we had up to 20 at one point. So we had representation from our counseling, our office staff, I think from all of our core areas and all of our arts and some of our extracurricular areas, some coaches that were on the team. I'll give a shout out because I noticed that there are several Central teachers here this evening that were also a part of that. And I appreciate Sal and her team in being able to say, yes, we're going to welcome everybody, just so that we really had the voice of how teachers saw the building. And it was great for me just to learn about the history of the building. And then really, they gave space to be able to say, how do we want our building to feel when we're done, knowing that it's not going to be a complete renovation that we've been watching across the field, but really making it something special for our team and for teachers to have that space, to have some voice in it.
So that group met, I think we met seven times to land really the floor plan of the building, which I'll walk you through. And then they also served as kind of a sounding board for us as we came up with designer architectural concepts that we got to share with them about a month ago, I believe it was, that they finally got to see what things were proposed to look like. In addition to that core planning group, any impacted space, just as all the other referendum projects, we did do a process that we call user groups. So to give an example, the learning commons was impacted, and so we met with the people who really spend their day in that space and wanted to understand even down to the level of where should power and data be, how should storage look, how tall should it be, how deep should it be? So really getting to that minutia level after the work of the core planning group. So to start going through the design, this was mentioned briefly already, but I'll just go through the scope list. So it's to renovate district center to create additional classroom space. That will get us to a total capacity of 1350 middle school students here in this building, which will be the same once South Campus becomes Mariner Middle School. There is a gym addition proposed to be as a part of the project. I'll show you that, where it is on the site plan and what it will look like. A huge part of the project was doing essentially a total recreation of the kitchen and cafeteria experience for Central. Updated classrooms, learning commons, and flexible learning areas, safety and security upgrades, and then last but not least, quite a few upgrades to the systems of the building, including adding dehumidification to classrooms. So it's one of the larger projects. As was already indicated, we started schematic design last summer, and we went through design development kind of through the fall. We finished the documents to go out for bidding in January, and the bid opening was just recently here in March. And if you all were to award bids tonight, some construction starts yet, would be proposed to start yet this summer, but would really be completed in phases over the next about two and a half years. So some of the work has to happen in summers because it's renovation while school is out, but things like the gym addition can happen year round. So it is one of the more complicated projects from a phasing perspective. We had actually like six or seven slides of these, and I won't read these all to you, but one of the things we do with the core planning group is before we ever draw anything, we try to understand the, so the referendum really set the scope and the budget of the project. But what we do is we work with the stakeholders to decide how to accomplish that and what are our goals. And so you'll see some of the things that really drove the design here. Talked about supporting community use, creating the ability to secure off areas of the building. We talked about how the commons should be utilized. We spent a lot of time talking about how the different grade levels may utilize the building. Talked about even things where like restroom should be near the cafeteria, so some problems that we want to get solved throughout the scope. And so like I said, there were lots of slides of these, but these really represent kind of our contracts between us and the core planning group of what we're trying to accomplish. Here is a site plan, and it's a long building, so it's hard to fit on a slide. But just for everybody's context, you can see Central Middle School and District Center is the large hatched red or pink color. And to give you a little context, the little rectangle to the right of that would be the hippodrome. So to give yourself some orientation, obviously, the parking lots where we all parked would be to the right of that, and then Price Field would be kind of behind the building. And then the area that's located or colored in the yellow color is where the gym addition is proposed to happen. And that's really where all of the gymnasium or athletic space happens in the building today. I'll zoom in on that on a better plan, but just to kind of orient you on where that's proposed to happen. And then when it comes to design inspiration, obviously Katherine already mentioned it's a building with a rich history that we wanted to draw upon. And your community is one that's really blessed to have really a landscape of wonderful natural opportunities. And the core planning group thought it was interesting to draw some parallels between things like walking trails and kind of the journey that middle schoolers go on. It's a big transitional phase of life. And the wanting to add a lot of vibrance to the building that doesn't feel like it has a lot of middle schooler spirit into it. So you'll see that throughout the design. We came up with verbiage that we used with the core planning group of homes, lakes, and trails. So this is a floor plan of the building. Again, it's a long building, so it doesn't fit very well on a slide. But to orient everyone, north is up, and we are in the space labeled fitness right now. So if you see that blue box that's kind of in the middle of the slide, right below that is actually the space we're standing in right now. And the home really represents those flexible learning areas that every grade level will have access to, so as they kind of stay in their house to do their core classwork. And then the trails really represent those transitional opportunities between, for example, the seventh grade area and then all of the specialist part of the building. So things that everybody uses are located in the center. So it'd be things like physical education, health, word language, art, the learning commons, the cafeteria. And then the district center is again proposed to be renovated into more classrooms for a specific grade level. And the core planning group thought that was important to try to reduce travel so you never had a class way over there and had to make it way over here, you know, within a passing time, and to create some sense of home, like I said, for a given grade level. And then our large gathering spaces are really where that vernacular of lake came into. So that would be the commons that's right inside the main entry of the building, the kitchen cafeteria area, and then on the second floor would be the learning commons. Couple of other changes, if you're familiar with the building, the current production area, which is kind of across the way from us, will be proposed to be renovated into two art rooms, to again try to centralize some of those things. I'll show you a rendering of it in a few slides here, but this space is actually proposed to be another physical education space, a fitness center. Like I said, there's going to be a gym addition, and then strategically taking a couple of spaces offline to create those flexible learning areas. So this is the lowest level of the building. Then if we go to the second floor, and highlighted in the red boxes are those flexible learning areas that we're considering the homes for each of the grade levels. The intent at this time, I believe, is for eighth grade to be on first floor in the northern part of the building, seventh grade to be directly, oops, sorry, above them. So eighth and seventh, and then actually district center will serve as space for sixth grade. And so we've got a collection of classrooms and labs to support math, English, those trades, and language arts happening for each grade level near their home, and then they all travel through the trail to those shared spaces in the center. Because floor plans aren't nearly as fun, I thought we'd bring some of the renderings. So these are, again, computer-generated renderings proposed on what spaces might look like and feel like. And we have worked with Katherine and her team on kind of their input on all of this, and then even gotten them samples. For example, what it looks like on my screen might look different than on your screen, might look different than on this TV monitor just because of coloring. So Katherine has samples of everything if anyone's interested. But this is proposed, the commons that's right inside the main entry of Central today to kind of reinvigorate that space as a flexible learning environment. There's a variety of opportunities for student work display to be up and down the hallways. And new furniture is proposed as a part of the project. That'll be a future phase. So this is one of those lake areas that I mentioned, the major gathering spaces. And so some of that architecture is coming through in the patterning that's happening on the walls with the acoustic panels, on the floor with the carpeting, and then in the ceiling with kind of that tiered or trade look. Another one of the, I should have mentioned on the floor plan, let me go back to it. I'm going to go back to the main level floor plan. I mentioned that a huge part of the project is the kind of a reimagining of the kitchen and cafeteria, both of which are, I would say, very undersized, especially to serve 1350 students. And so what's going to happen is that the kitchen will actually take over the better, much, maybe three quarters of what's considered the kitchen and cafeteria today to become appropriately sized, with the right size freezer and cooler and dry storage and serving lines. And then the cafeteria is actually going to expand and take over the four classrooms across the hall. So right now, there are four classrooms on the east side of the building that will become more kitchen cafeteria. We worked with Katherine and her team to get everybody a new home landed so that we can have an appropriate-sized kitchen cafeteria. So that's kind of the context for this, just to help everyone kind of understand what we're looking at. The columns that are kind of on the left-hand side of the image and the ones directly across from that, that would actually represent where the hallway is today, for example. And so to the, and we're planning on opening that up quite a bit, so it feels a little bit more like a commons reunion. And so it's a little off-camera, so to speak, but the kitchen would be to the left of this image. And again, kind of, we're kind of standing in what used to be the hallway, and then the four classrooms used to be on the right-hand side, and that would provide more dining space. And the goal is to be able to have three lunch periods, even with 1350 students. That was kind of a major driver of getting more square footage to that. Here's a view of the major gathering space on the second floor of the building, which would be the learning commons. It is largely staying where it is. It's just getting a few amenities added to it, reimagining of flexible furniture and some transparency to a couple of correlating spaces across the hall like a maker's space. So that's mostly kind of just trying to take the walls down, give it some fresh life, a couple of small group rooms, things of that nature. Here's an example of what one of the trail language that I mentioned might look like or feel like, trying to bring some life to the hallways. It is a long building that has a lot of hallway. And so to really try to demarcate that you're leaving maybe, for example, the seventh grade area and going to a common or shared space that you might pass through one of these trails. Here is an example of one of the flexible learning areas. I believe this one is the first level, one in the eighth grade area. So if you're familiar with the building, kind of where the flooring changes today, that's actually where there are two walls and there's a classroom there today. And so we're taking one classroom off of each level offline, and they are replaced in the district office, so that every grade level has one of those homes or gathering spaces. And that includes provisions for small group, for intervention, special education, individual work. We've got opportunities for display, marker boards, things of that nature. So like I said, every grade level will have one. They each look a little different just because of the building architecture, but the seventh and eighth grade ones would end up being quite similar. Just another view of that. So this is me, sorry, I should have mentioned, this is us standing in the hallway kind of looking at it. And then this view would be us inside that space, looking back towards the hallway where we were just looking. You can see, for example, our marker board was requested that's on the right-hand side of this, and that kind of hearth-looking element in the background of this would actually have a monitor or display, and some student display space. This is fun because we're standing in this space today. So this is that proposed fitness center, so to try to get Central to have an adequate amount of physical education space. I was told that I need to mention in particular that that goofy step is going away. So goofy step is going away. And then this elevated platform that serves as your board dais will be flattened so that it can be a continuous flat floor space.
And this space used to be a gymnasium.
Yes, yes. Maybe returning it from whence it came, yes.
They called it the pit. They called it the pit?
Okay.
I was here.
We need to rebrand it, but.
Yeah.
And much of this is actually equipment that exists in, I think it's Gym B presently, right?
Most of it.
Most of it's in Gym B presently. So a lot of this space is actually just painted a new flooring material that's more appropriate for athletics. Proposed to have mirrors on this wall that's actually right to the right of us. And then I'll go actually to the next view. This would be like if I was standing up at the board table looking back at the rest of the space, just planned for both weightlifting and also cardio equipment, things of that nature, yoga, aerobics, really meant to be a flexible space, just not one for basketball. And then good segue into, this is a view of the new gym. So this is, for those who have been at them, the same-sized gym that would have been added at, for example, Lincoln Elementary School or the gym at North Star. So those are good comparisons for you. So a full-size basketball court with appropriate clearance around it, it will serve as a storm shelter for the building. So does have some bathrooms associated with it, but lots of natural light proposed on both the, I should say, the north, east, and south walls of it. So here's one view, kind of as you have just walked in, the connection back to the building would be just behind us to the right. And then here's a view kind of from the corner, looking back at where we just were. And then just a couple of notes about the exterior. So the right-hand image on this slide would show where that gym is proposed to be located. So as you recognize, kind of the curve of Central, and then the large volume on the bottom of the image would be some of the current gyms. So again, this will be kind of in that same realm, near the locker rooms and things of that nature. And it will have doors out to the outside. We've talked about that, for example, those bathrooms could serve the fields and things of that nature. If you ever had a weather event out on one of the stadiums, that you could come and use the gym as a shelter, things like that. And this really is meant to try to borrow from some of the architecture from the most recent addition to Central. So that's what some of the graphics on the left-hand side of the slide are showing is, you know, the mullion patterning and windows and brick patterning so that we didn't introduce a third or a fourth architectural language to a building that's been added on to a couple of times, so try to make it blend in. Here's what that is proposed to look like. So we're kind of standing in the northwest corner looking, no, yeah, northwest corner looking southeast. You can see the existing building on the left-hand side there, and then kind of Price would be off to the right if we had turned the camera. So this is proposed to be made of mostly masonry, and then I mentioned quite a bit of natural daylight that's been planned. And one just last view, so then the existing building would be off to the right, and then here would be the kind of the western face of that gymnasium. And I think with that, we would just love to take any comments or questions for either of us.
Sure. Any questions for Ms. Bagley or Ms. Peterson? Ms. Daniels?
Looking back at one of the first slides, I think it was the kind of the long view of the building, it looked like Price Field was changed to north, kind of a north-south. Is that, so is that right?
That's true.
That's accurate.
That move hasn't happened yet, but that is bid out as a part of the high school project. That's true. I believe that's this summer, if I'm not mistaken.
It begins this spring and summer, yep.
Begins this summer, so we'll start seeing dirt move over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. The only other thing I was going to comment on, I mean, I was here when they renovated, you know, way back when. And this was, of course, the original high school.
Yeah.
Way back. And I don't know what the date is, but I know the hippodrome is like, what, 1914, 18?
I think it's 1918.
Yeah, I think it was that part of the Ramsey County Fair hippodrome back then. But one part of the building that I think a lot of people have been in the community a long time that are really interested in, probably are not going to touch, are those the, what we used to call the think doors? And have you, I mean, it's just, it's the word think over the center of the building? And I don't, there used to be a main entrance there. I mean, have you, I mean, is that's not part of any plan? I mean, have you, I mean, is that's not part of any planning or anything, or renovation, or?
We're not planning to remove those, no.
Yeah, or do anything with them.
I would say the group debated quite heavily if the main entrance of Central should move as a part of this, and it's a building that has a, it's kind of hard to say where the center of gravity is. But I would say the way we got through that was, let me go to the floor plan. So the administrative area is kind of towards the northern end of the building, but one of the solutions that the group came up with was actually to have many administrators in what's actually currently the community services area, so that will be more of a student support area, so that will have counselors, social work.
We took everything that we could to say, we have this really long building, and how do we condense it and really prioritize it so that it feels like home and it feels comfortable? So we're keeping the main office where it is, because that seemed like the most obvious sightline when people are coming in to have where the signage is, and then moving all of the student support, so counselors, social worker, chemical health, to the other end of the building, which then we figured we have people that can offer support on both sides of the building, you know, if there is an emergency, and then also just thinking two, first sensitivity for families, if kids are leaving or there's things going on, there's always an exit in both spaces where people are able to exit the building.
But I think we talked about using any one of the set of doors on the eastern side of the building, I was like, well, maybe that would be a good entrance, maybe that one. We kind of landed at the current entrance makes sense for the secure entrance, but then having, locating other administrators elsewhere, so.
Yeah, Ms. Daniels?
Second, I just lost my train of thought. I'll let somebody else go first.
Let me add to yours, so I have a list of, this was from Mr. Tim Walz, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he had, he had pulled together the dates of additions. So the district, the main high school opened up in 1918, and then there were additions, and this is a whole, the high school and then Central too, but, so additions in 1924, 1928, 1935, 1953, and 1990, so.
And 2024, probably 2022 addition will be done, so.
And we had a line of world-language mobile homes outside for a while. And that was sometime in the 90s.
Yeah.
Spilling with a long and interesting history.
Yeah. I know what my question was.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Daniels.
Came back. I was gonna, I was thinking about the elevators. I know there's one right here, there's one way down on the other end, correct? So there's not going to be any additional, I think about our kids who are, have mobility issues, wheelchairs, things like that, so those are going to remain the same, nothing additional are going to be added.
There are not any proposed elevator additions at this time. Actually, that, not your question, but there was a big discussion about bathrooms in the District Center portion of the building, and so to try to make sure that there's enough bathrooms for students, there'll actually be quite a bit of renovations on all three levels to try to get a little bit more of that asset down into here, but elevators did not come up.
Other questions?
I have none.
Dr. Arcand?
So if I'm correct, we're going to, this is up next, and then Sunrise Park will be next. I was curious, well, how we transition our administrative offices over to Sunrise and get these started, if that comes next?
Carefully.
Okay.
It's been complicated.
I have no idea. That's why we have Sal working for us.
So we've been working on that, so I would say District Center becoming classrooms is like the last piece of the puzzle, and then kind of conversely, the parts of Sunrise Park becoming District Center needs to be the first phase of that project, which we're maybe 30% of the way through designing. But the goal is that come fall of 2025, all of the work is done here, so that really tells us that District, the District Center, at least part of Sunrise, needs to be complete by that time. And so we're carefully balancing that with Cross Anderson, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? This is really exciting.
Yes, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Just, oh, I just thought of one question. When was the last time that there were students in classrooms in this building?
Well, that's a fun question.
Looking at my colleagues over here.
Yeah, I taught over here.
No, yeah, we have, we have some now.
What was that?
We have some students meeting now, but you mean they go back to school?
But I mean, like, that this was the building that was a school.
Uh-huh.
Do we use this space for health, like, you know?
Yeah, I know that this space is used, but I'm interested in, like, when was the last time that there weren't administrative offices here?
Yeah, I did teach here in the 90s, and we were in this old section of the building, and I had class, you know, upstairs.
Okay.
So I don't know exactly which year that was.
But it's, it's been decades.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it'll be nice to have these halls full of students.
93 was 30 years ago, so that's a long time ago. Doesn't seem now.
Science was on third floor.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
All right, move into our second discussion item, which is D2, the first reading of school board policies. For those who are new to how this process works, school board policies come to the full board for a first reading, where board members have an opportunity to ask questions and to make comments, and then they come to us again the following month for a second reading when they are approved. And in between, they go to the policy committee, of which a couple of board members serve on, and a number of members of the cabinet. So we have first and second readings tonight. Our first readings are Policies Number 201, 202, 203.2, 203.5, 203.6, 414, 415, and 605. And so board members, if you have any questions or comments, please direct us to the correct policy and page number. Any comments or questions? Okay, those will come to us again for a second reading next month. We'll move into our operational items now, Operation Item E1, Action on Bids for Central Middle School Renovation and Gymnasium Addition, Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Attached, please find the recommendation letter and bid tabulation sheet for the Central Middle School Renovation and Gymnasium Addition, which you just learned about. Bids were opened on March 21, 2023, after reviewing the bids with our construction manager, Cross Anderson. It is recommended we award the bid to the low bidders as listed, with a total project bid of $23,997,186. Just want to note that two low bids were withdrawn due to mathematical errors made by the bidders, causing us to go with the second lowest bidder. Those were in 8A, Twin City Hardware withdrew its bid of $171,000, so the award went to Britimus Hardware for $337,967. And then Arnt Construction on Scope 31A, Arnt Construction withdrew their bid of $373,560, so was awarded to Rachel Contracting at $531,800. And just note that Rachel Contracting is already on site at the high school, and we've been pleased with their work, so we're excited they'll be working on this project as well. So this, the budget amount was $24.67 million, and we're in, coming in just under $24 million, so. Anyway, I would recommend approval as the bid tab sheet is presented.
You've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels, any further discussion or questions? Want to confirm that this is part of our bond referendum funding?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Referendum more to long-term facilities maintenance.
For long-term facilities maintenance, right. Right. With no further questions, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll for approval.
Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Move into our next operational item, E2, Action on the Fiscal Year 2021-22 Federal Single Audit. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. Well, we're almost done with the school year, and so we can present the single audit from last school year. At the January 23, 2003 meeting, the Fiscal Year 21-22 Audit was approved, and at that time, Jim Eichden, who was our auditor from MMKR, explained that the single audit, which is a separate audit of the district's federal programs, would be brought forward at a later date. Due to the increased amount of COVID-related funding that districts received, auditors had extra time to complete that single audit this, for last school year. So in total, our district received $15,923,000 of federal funds last year, and MMKR audited four different federal programs, our child nutrition, Title I, and then two COVID relief funds. In their review, MMKR issued one finding related to internal controls in the Title I program related to documentation of staff salaries. We've since worked on tightening up our processes, and we feel confident that that finding will not happen for this school year. So the entire single audit report is included in the packet for your review. At this time, the recommended, the recommended action is to approve the Fiscal 21-22 Federal Single Audit Report as presented.
You've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Daniels, any further discussion? Just to clarify, Ms. Johnson, the federal single audit report is for organizations that receive federal funding over a certain amount?
Yeah, the threshold is $750,000, so we're.
Okay, and through Title I funding, the school lunch, the nutrition, and then the COVID funding?
Yep, yep. The one program that wasn't audited was Special Ed. We're fortunate we didn't have to have that one audited.
Okay.
And normally this would come to the board along with the regular audit, but as Andy explained, it was delayed.
Yep. Okay. Any further questions or comments? All right, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you. Move into our next operational item, E3, Action on Foundation of Success. Dr. Gillespie.
Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. At our last work-study session, we discussed the foundations of success. Am I going in the right direction? No, I'm not. Foundations of success. I wanted to present a summary tonight and then ask you at the end to approve our foundations of success. So we pulled together a fifth action team during our strategic plan that included community members and White Bear Lake area staff. We met five times from September to October, and we started with two questions for the group. What is your hope for our students' future, and what would you like your child to be able to do when they graduate? And we discussed at our last meeting that often districts have portraits of a graduate, but it was really important for our group that we talked about foundation of success so that each one of our learners in our system could see themselves in the document that we created. After we created a draft document, we sought a lot of feedback throughout our community, staff, and students. We had received feedback from over 25 different groups, including parent-teacher organizations, building leadership groups through our principals, our district department directors sought feedback from advisory groups, and then many more individuals. And we took all that feedback together as a group and looked at it again in March and came up with our final draft, which we presented to you at our last work-study session. The final draft is here on this document, which includes six areas and then descriptions under those areas. I'll read the main topics, the objective and then the main topics. Foundation of success, our objective is to ensure each student achieves their personal goals and desired career pathway. We will provide educational experiences designed to develop students, excuse me, designed to develop skills defined by the following learned attributes: fundamental learning, flexible and critical thinking, community engagement, character, communication, and teamwork. Our next steps are to use the foundation of success as part of our curriculum review process, communicate about the foundation of success across our system, and then align the feedback and assessment around the skills that are prioritized by this work. I wanted to take a minute again to thank all the members of our action team, Bill Marr, who co-facilitated this group with me, Lenala Von, Justin Sharper, Dave Lammers, Darcy Rodriguez, Drew Mariama, Angela Drange, Victoria Basoto, Kathleen Daniels, and then we had support throughout the whole process from Megan Frost, Marisa Vetti, and Todd Perssteiner. The recommended action before you is that you adopt the foundation of success as part of our strategic plan process, which would mean that we would bring updates to you just like we would the rest of the strategic plan, and it would be subject to revision, much like the whole process that we've done periodically throughout.
You've heard the. Thank you, sorry, Dr. Gillespie, thank you. You've heard the recommended action, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand, any further discussion or questions? Ms. Daniels?
I have just a comment. I wanted to thank Dr. Gillespie and the coach, Bill Marr, for facilitating everything. I didn't attend all the meetings, but I attended enough to know that there was a lot of wonderful ideas and information, and people were very passionate about their ideas, and to distill it all down to these six areas and to really include everyone's information is just a lot of work, so thank you very much. And to the other members of the committee, thanks.
Any further comment or discussion? Dr. Arcand?
I just want to say I really like the product that we produced here, and I feel like it wraps up our total strategic plan and really summarizes and puts it together and supports it, so I think this is very important, and I think it does a nice job, and this is something we need to share with our parents and our community, and this is how, this is, you know, this is White Bear Lake school system and our communities, so I really like what you've done.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, we've had a first and a second, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Gillespie. Operational item E4, Action on Resolution Proposing Placement of Continuing Contract Teachers on Unrequested Leaves of Absence, Mr. Mons.
So I'm presenting the following resolution, but I do have a couple of notes that I'd like to make, too, first of all. This is one of the, this is some of the toughest work that we do as administrators, is working through these budget reductions, especially when it means jobs. And when we're talking about our continuing contract educators, these are highly valued staff members of ours that have made a real commitment to our district, and we're really committed to them, and it's really hard when, when we get to this point. I also recognize this is a snapshot in time, which means this is what we are able to guarantee in terms of positions for next year. We are hopeful that for a number of the individuals on the list here, that we will be able to retain them and offer them something substantially equivalent to their current position with the district. So that's just a note that I wanted to make, because we're certainly still working on that and trying to minimize the impact both for the individuals and for our programming.
Well, the recommended action is to approve the resolution proposing placement of continuing contract teachers on unrequested leaves of absences. Can I get a motion to approve?
Moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you. And then we'll move into our final operational item, E5, Action on School Board Policies. These are the policies that are coming before us for a second reading. Usually we, we approve these in one fell swoop, so we are going to be asking for approval of 211, 212, 214, 215, 410, 721, and 802. And if I could get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand, any discussion about the second reading of these policies? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and the motion passes. We will now move into our final agenda item, which is Board Forum. Board Forum is an opportunity for board members to share what's going on in the community, ways that we are participating, and things like going to events throughout the district. So I would ask the board to please share anything that is going on in the district that they're participating in. Dr. Arcand?
Okay, I just want to let anybody from White Bear Lake school system know that we're going to be talking about trash on Friday as part of the Ramsey County League of Local Governments. We're going to bring people in because it's Earth Day, it's in the month of April. So we're going to be talking about how do we, how do we work with our trash as municipalities,[1669.47]